Okay, welcome everybody. I'm gonna call the order and Jenny could you do both please?
Pinkens, here. Flowersuck, yes. Triplet, here. Sires, here. Olthus, here. Pregnant, here. Bobo, here.
Okay, item number three on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. We approve it.
Second.
Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, closed. We only have one item tonight, but we have, I believe, need two motions. Have to do one before the other. And we'll first let anybody in the audience talk. If you come to the podium and state your name and address, we would appreciate that. Would anybody like to address the commission? Yes, sir. Would you please come up?
My name is Barrett Ford, uh, 428 Hillcrest Drive. So, I want to say we don't, we don't agree with the potential zoning change that's coming up. Our family is also impacted by dementia. We understand the need for this facility. We want this facility, this is the place. We bought our home with the understanding that lying behind our property would be developed. We knew it was gonna happen. We expected it'd be zoned for single-family homes. We see children, we see another neighborhood back there. And a great place for our family to grow. And that's part of what it deserves just to make the purchase of that house. What's entering isn't a neighborhood. It's not a house, it's not a home, it's a business. We're concerned about the increased noise, the increase in traffic. The traffic flow with the increase in employees, visitors compared to if they residentially zone. With the last discussion, parking is not great. There is no parking on that road that it is on. They're gonna be all throughout the neighborhoods. The trail access that runs beside our home on Washington Street, constantly used by families walking to the playground. Individuals walking in their dogs, bikers on their way to the trail coming from. Placing a business behind our home along that walking trail is only gonna make that traffic flow heavier and potentially more unsafe for families and people on that, on that trail. We also have concerns about today, the logistics of running a business like that. Light pollution into our home. There's gonna be a trail which is going to be a large road that they have to drive vehicles on because we learned before that a fire truck has to be able to drive on this road. So, what is that gonna do in that area for us? Where are the lights gonna be placed? Are there gonna be lights on the road there on there 24/7? Is it gonna be shining into the lights into all of our neighbors' apartments? Dumpsters, we never heard anything about trash in dumpsters. Where are they gonna go? Is it gonna just sit in the heat in these buildings? In a dumpster that we have to stare at when garbage trucks come through? It's a lot of noise. They have to be able to probably drive on that road too. So, food deliveries also probably gonna go on that road. That's a whole semi driving through there and again, because they're not gonna be, that's a lot of people they have to feed. So, is that also gonna be going back on that road? If the alarm goes off, a patient leaves the building, or somebody leaves a door open for too long. How long is that alarm gonna go? What, nobody knows what hour of the day or night that's gonna happen. How quickly is that gonna be shut off so the neighborhood can again have some peace? And hopefully that person is found or that door is closed. Yeah, we're concerned about what's this gonna do to our property value, the taxes in the coming years. This new lack of privacy isn't gonna make potentially in the future selling our home any easier. We just wanna enjoy our backyard and not have to worry about going, going in our backyard, having a campfire, and having people that work there possibly having a cigarette staring, staring out at us. It's not, it's not a welcoming, comforting, it's not a neighborhood kind of situation. We need this facility, there's no doubt. We absolutely do, especially with the one that closed that is just down the road from where they wanna do this. This isn't the place. And they told us last time they're here, normally they do this on a bigger space. Normally they offer more rehab. They offer more, more, more in these other places because they have more space. Don't shortchange us and our community because you need more space. And you're trying to jam something in a, in a, I think you've set yourself with several acres too small. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience who'll give the developer a chance to talk?
I had one person ask to speak.
Robert Schultz, 404 Hillcrest Drive. I second all of those remarks, but wanted to add something else. I spoke with Brian and said that one of the reasons they weren't going to another property with more acreage was they wanted to be close to downtown. A town of 6,000, you could be anywhere around here and be close to downtown. If you had a shovel, you could be downtown in two minutes. So, to have all of the things that changed from an R1 to a PUD changes the environment for our lifestyle for all those that are enjoying that property. And I thank Brian for looking at, at Polk City like it was said, we need a facility here. It just shouldn't be in my backyard.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience? Yes, sir?
Kerry Mahanna, 313 Maple Drive, Polk City. I'm going to try to remain in my five minutes, 'cause I got a lot to present. I will be respectful of your time. I will try not to repeat myself. Do have some points to make. First and foremost, you're gonna be taking a look at your future land use plan that, tonight. And just as a background, your comp plan is basically your future land use, and then you couple it with your zoning. That becomes how you control what you want there. This comp plan, which was done not too many years ago, has for surrounding property uses, open space, parks and recs, low-density residential. Period. Not extreme, high-density residential. Low density is up to four units per acre. High density is between eight and 24. In this proposal that's in front of you, you have 20.84 units per acre. Extremely high. On your PUD rezoning, parking provided 101. Previously that was 88, so we had a, an increase of 13 there. Per code, 142. You've got 42 units of memory care that are providing zero parking. And they utilize this for 30 staff parking. For holidays and other visitation times, they're going to use a church of business shuttle service. How are you gonna enforce that? Cherokee Drive, you all remember this? Parking regulations that Polk City had created a huge problem. This group sought to make these changes. Two-car garage became the norm. Problems on Cherokee was overflow in parking and no place for people to park. None. With 55 spaces underground on this proposal, parking is going, they're not gonna use it. They're gonna think, well, first off, it's gonna be used by anybody that has it parked. Get it out of the weather. Second off, parking is gonna overflow into the neighborhood. It's not gonna wait for a shuttle bus to come back and forth. Get it from a school, get it from a church. It's just not gonna happen. Then you get conflicts with the people that, say it's Christmas, and they wanna have their family there. The parking that they would have on the street is probably gonna be gone. So, we have that conflict concept going on. PUD was set up for 10 or more acres, not six. Height. Proposed height is 43 feet, 4 and 1/2 inches. In an R1 or an R1A zone, height is restricted to a maximum of 35, no question. A building at 43 and 4 and 1/2 inches tall does not fit into an R1 or an R1A zoning district. Believe this or not, this building will be the tallest building in Polk City. Other considerations I would ask the P and D to make. The fire apparatus is in this bike trail, let's call it. It's got a turnaround. In other words, there's a conflict between ingress and egress. And the only way to make that conflict go away is for this Y that's towards the end of the drive closer to Leonard Park. The west side yard, 12 and 1/2 feet, I see no proposed landscape buffer in there. Total open space. In residential areas, you cannot encumber your yard more than 35% with building. I don't know what the percent is here, 'cause I couldn't get measurement from the information that was presented. But again, here we have something that we're trying to call residential, which is business. We're trying to put the residential side swinger thing on it, and it's just not working. It does not fit that neighborhood. Doesn't fit the open space, it doesn't fit density, and it sure doesn't fit parking. Lastly, this proposal's been in front of you for 31 and 1/2 hours. I had to scramble to get all my information. I, I hope you had plenty of time and had plenty of staff input to help you with that. I would ask that you would vote on this as if this would affect you and your property.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else in the audience like that address the commission? Yes, sir?
My name is Anthony Capello, I'm in the 417 Hillcrest Drive. My wife and I have lived in Polk City for 35 years. When we first moved here, we never considered that we might need a facility like this. Unfortunately, it's not too far distance in our, distant in our future. We would like to stay in our own neighborhood. We love ours. There's no doubt, especially with the nursing home closing, that we need a facility like this in Polk City. So, I would ask that you strongly consider the changes that Brian has made, his plan, and approve this rezoning so that we can have a very, very needed facility here. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Would the developer like to say anything or this presentation?
Thanks for the opportunity to speak in front of you again and discuss the project. Certainly aware of the delicate nature of the project. And, you know, the couple months that it took us to get to 50%. Certainly speaks to the conversations and to the, uh, to the delicacy of the process. We're very aware of that. First of all, uh, my partner was able to make it this time. He had another city council meeting last time. This is Ross Nichols with Maven Crux, just in case he's got some discussion points, excuse me. But the, I guess the few issues that we got at hand, one was the parking. And I'd like to address that first. We did work with city staff, had some conversations about how we might be able to educate each other, excuse me, educate each other and understand the parking ratios and requirements. And I believe Kathleen has some information that she shared in the pamphlet with you, and she's got some additional information that I think she'll share here a bit. We are above and beyond what the parking requirements and ratios would be for a, a project of this statue. The underground parking that is show, that is in underneath independent living, it does get used. It's actually in high demand in the Midwest. It's, it's very unlikely to do a project in the Midwest without underground parking because of poor shelter from bad weather, cold, what have you. Typically it's on a one-on-one basis with independent living just because it's such a high cost to put that project in place as opposed to the surface parking. So, it's, uh, it's actually a luxury for this type of project to have additional parking stalls, and it doesn't get used. Staff uses it whenever they can. Prior to selling all the units, staff is using it whenever they can, taking those spaces to get up on the ground. We continue to massage, can you receive this okay? We continue to massage the parking area front. Obviously, there's some work to be done on the design for townhomes, but we were able to get five additional stalls on the surface parking as a function of the redesign of the parking lot after working with the city. We also were able to look back at previous master plans for the park next door. And we added 19 stalls. There's actually ability, more than 19 stalls, but that's what's shown without future parking on that. And the intent of that was to show that we've got the capacity to, one, help take traffic off the streets of adjacent neighborhoods, so there's some parking available in that space. It also creates an overflow opportunity so that on big events, where we're gonna have events where staff, staff will be required, and it's very difficult from an operational standpoint for them to require staff to park in a rented location that we'll identify and work with to shuttle residents. That keeps things open for a certain hour of the day where we can shuttle the staff in to work, but keeps the front portions open or even underground parking open if needed so that we can put the close proximity park for visitors to visit their parents, grandparents, brothers, sisters, anything else that's coming to the staff. So, so that will be taken care of. And, and, uh, as we will see in the memo and the information from the city, based on several comparisons with neighboring communities and senior-level properties that are similar to this, we are going above and beyond that. So, it does get used. We do regulate that. And, and from an operational standpoint, how do we regulate it? We require our staff to do that, otherwise the staff's not gonna be staffed for very much longer because they're not listening to the operation of the program. So, from a light pollution standpoint, we've got the ability with the lighting and things to control the directness of the lights, to direct that towards the property. From a delivery standpoint, we've got the ability to control deliveries for certain times of day where it's gonna be less impactful for the residents around it. Deliveries are scheduled to go to the town center through this delivery drive down the side of the project. So, that is buffered and sheltered by these single-family homes on the side of the property. And that will also be the location where we'll be picking up deliveries for dumpsters, those sorts of things. So, we've got the actual design of that town home, our town center, is still in process, as I said, but, uh, but that will be worked out so that this delivery drive connects for that. In many cases, there's also a dumpster or chute for the independent living. And the dumpsters are below, and those dumpsters get pulled out to curb so that they can pull those off the edge of the building and pull those back out. So, we'll work through the details on that, but it's very typical for that. Even from a emergency vehicle standpoint, we typically work with the staff for the local jurisdictions and make sure that they know unless there's an absolute emergency, we work them at lights off, sirens off whenever possible to come in so it's not disruptive to the location unless there's just an absolute emergency that we've got some serious, some problems on. And this trail will not be used on a regular basis. We've got ballards designed at many of the projects that are removable ballards, that are locked or can be run over by the trucks in the event of a huge emergency from a time standpoint. So, they're breakaway ballards, that way they could come in, work their way. And a hammerhead is, is not an untypical solution to sites such as this as well where they've got the ability to turn around with a hammerhead, but there are requirements for the curves and the amount of distance and those sorts of things for that to occur. So, we've covered for that with civil engineering. As far as the landscape buffer, we have gone above and beyond the requirements of landscape buffer. We've realized we're requesting a zoning change. And as a result, R3 does require additional, about twice the landscape buffer that the typical residential buffer would require. We've agreed to put that in. We've also agreed to increase the setback distance on all property areas, particularly on the residential sides, to help buffer the distances between our building and the project. So, we're up in sort of a 30 or 40-foot distance. We've got a 65 buffer on each of those locations. So, trying to do the best we can to make this work in response to not shortcutting, you know, the residents. The last thing we wanna do is shortcut the residents. And we are not short cutting the residents. We are actually providing independent living, assisted living, and memory care. It's very rare for communities these days to have a skilled nursing component. The reimbursements from a government level standpoint are getting more and more difficult. And a lot of the operational groups in the country are steering away from projects that do have, both from an acquisition standpoint and destruction of skilled nursing. It's done in the other areas of care. It's not ideal because it's not a, a specific skilled nursing facility. So, there are very specific requirements for that. You know, they, they are able to take care of the vast majority of those types of cases in memory care setting where assisted living or home care with some additional care levels that are provided. So, as far as the density and the, and why we need to be close proximity, for a two, two-minute or five-minute shovel doesn't seem like much to somebody who's able to drive on a regular basis and hop the car and get wherever they want to be. But if you're isolated to the point where you're, some people like to live out in the country in isolated areas. But many of the people that are moving to these communities are of an age where they may not have considered moving into senior living at all, but their spouse passed away. And now they're in desperate need of socialization, care. They wanna be around other people where they never thought they'd ever move into a senior living location. It's 78, 82 is the average age of the residents that move into these locations. And those individuals do need care. They do need to be, they'd like to see the activity of the kids going to the park. They'd like to see the activity of the cars going by. Close proximity to healthcare, to salons, restaurants, those sorts of things. And a shuttle that's coming from, you know, five minutes out of town is five, 10 minutes away typically. And that doesn't feel like a long distance to us, but to somebody in that care level it is. And that's why we've chosen this location as really the only place that's got even sizable enough land area to make it work. So, it is driving the density on this product, property, which is why we tried to help by buffering that with the other, the other amenities such as the, the larger buffer areas and the landscaping and things to accommodate what we're doing here. But by no means are we shorting anybody by putting this in. One question that was asked about reducing density. The only way to reduce density on the project to make it work financially would be to eliminate a level of care. And that frankly helps from a financial model standpoint because the independent living would go away and we'd get a higher rent rate for the assisted living and memory care. But that's not the right answer. And as a developer who's gonna own this and develop it and wanna own it long-term, the right answer is to keep those three levels of cares and not shortcut the people of the community by not offering that. The market study actually says that there's a demand of about 180 independent living units that could be used in the community. In addition to our 51 assisted living, it's telling us there should be closer to 90 assisted living. Now, the memory care side, there's closer to 70 or 80 units there that are needed. And so, if you look at those quantities and those numbers, those are people that are gonna have to go outside of Polk City here if we don't get this project done in this location or in some fashion in Polk City. And this is the right answer. Unfortunately, it is tight, but it's the right location for a lot of other reasons. So, I hope you consider those elements and, uh, get any questions answered?
I had one quick question. Do you have, based on your other facilities, a rough idea of what, what would be your maximum capacity in a, you know, peak time? I don't know if holidays would be it or for staff and visitors.
So, 70 to 80 staff members that would be employed at this location. So, the, the peak time would be at a point where there's a shift change in those two locations. So, you say roughly 2/3 of that amount? That would be the plus whatever visitation and staff. But typically those shift changes are off-hours except for one, one period of time. And even on that location, or that one period of time, it's typically the opposite direction of the traffic flowing for, for most of those. So, uh, so it would be roughly 4, 5, 50 parking stalls? If you took 2/3 of that amount on a shift change, and not all of those are coming at the same time, but yeah.
But then visitors coming in, stay on a holiday, or what would be your peak time? Just based on experience rather than looking at Polk, sure, another facility. What's your busiest time visitors come in?
I can answer that, Brian.
Sure.
Uh, the two, the two busiest would be, oh, sorry, Ross Nichols, Waki, Iowa. 2, 3, 4, 5, Southeast Little Brook. Two, the two biggest ones would be Mother's Day and Easter. Those are our biggest ones. Traditionally, Thanksgiving, Christmas, things like that. People are coming, picking up their residents or their, their loved ones and taking them back to the ones that get together. So, traditionally, it's Easter and it's, and it's Mother's Day. And a lot of times what we do there to mitigate the concern with, with parking is we actually have our staff off-site. So, we'll find a space for them to actually park and we'll shuttle them. And a lot of times on those days, what we'll do is we'll also have staff persons out in the parking lot as well so they can help jockey around traffic and things like that.
Sorry, thank you.
Yeah, I was just gonna add a couple other items. One of the, one of the comments that was made was employee breaks and then being outside. 99% of our campuses are smoke-free. We don't, we don't allow any smoking whatsoever. We don't want cigarette butts, and we don't want the, the, the air pollution frankly, especially when some of our residents are dealing with respiratory issues and stuff like that. So, and again, for our employees, we take care of them just as much as we do our residents. So, they have dedicated break areas. We don't necessarily allow congregating and being a nuisance to residents and maybe sitting on the patio or maybe sitting inside their residence. So, that's one thing. The other thing that I wanted to address on was the fact that we are residential. This is not a business. There isn't a single municipality in this country that I've worked with we have ever been constituted or declared a business. They're always specifically in residential communities. We're pushed to go into residential communities because we're great neighbors, we're quiet. And as a matter of fact, there was one project I was working on in Nashville a few years ago that was really cool. When Nashville was going through all their, their floods, our communities are outfitted with emergency generators. And we were able to be a resource to the community around us. They're actually able to come in, get meals, place to cool down because their AC was still working and things like that. So, we try to be as much of a, of an outlet, resource as possible. And the other thing I wanted to do is shine a little bit of light on the, uh, on the density question. My background in college, I actually graduated from Iowa State with a major in planning background. So, I'm very familiar with how comprehensive plans work and land use maps and things like that. And one of the things that's interesting when you take into consideration density... is when you're looking at single-family, medium-density, high-density, those are all done based on EUs, equivalent dwelling units. So it's how many people are gonna be living within that particular product type? And how much strain are they putting on police, how much strain are they putting on your library, your streets, all your infrastructure, including your traffic? And typically, if you take like a normal apartment building, that equivalent dwelling unit is gonna be based on two-point-two-five to two-and-a-half people per, per unit. Okay, same thing with multi, or single-family, single-family is obviously gonna be higher. They're assuming that there's family, more drivers. With a senior living community, when it's brand new, you're at about one-point-five. But within about three years, you usually settle down to about one-point-two-five to one-point-three persons per unit. So to say that our density is comparable to some of the others isn't isn't fair, which is why any project I've ever worked on always been a, to make sure that that the senior living and those, that density and those EUs are being taken into consideration fairly when you actually look at the impact that it has on the community around us. And to that, it's interesting, all the traffic studies that we've been a part of, I, I can't think of a time where we actually added string to the traffic because our peak times are are different. We're not going to, our residents aren't going to work at seven o'clock in the morning. They're not coming home from work at five o'clock at night. They're going mid-morning, they're going early afternoon. So they don't necessarily want to be driving in 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 traffic. So we'll just throw that out there as well. Thank you.
Ms. Kathleen, you're next.
Real quick, first of all, just to touch real quickly on the fire apparatus. Just, you know, we did look at that, we looked at turning ratios, and we actually got the fire chief that had intel. She was quite comfortable with it, had input on the types of ballards she'd like to see because that it'll be cut off from vehicular traffic unless there's actually an emergency that you'd need to have access to it. So normally that will function as a trip. So that's just kind of what I want to make sure everybody understood it wasn't just engineering, it was the fire chief as well that had input on that. Secondly, we did do some research on the parking in a variety of other communities since that last meeting. And what we found, memo was in your packet, we looked at Altoona, Ankeny, Grimes, Johnston, Urbendale, and Weston Wayne. And just as some, some random communities, what we found is that, City of Altoona, when you go through their calculations, which are spelled out in detail in your memo, you come up with a requirement for ninety-five parking stalls compared to what what we are now proposing be the required parking stalls, let me just double-check my memo, make sure it's the right number, of one-hundred-and-one. So it would, it's, Altoona's is not sixty-six-point-nine percent of what Polk City's requirement would have been. So a little over half of what Polk City would have required in terms of their forty-two, one-hundred-and-forty-two. Ankeny would have required ninety-two parking stalls for this, for the total community. Grimes, seventy-one stalls as opposed to the one-hundred-and-one were proposed, that's now being proposed as the reduced number of parking stalls. Johnston would have required sixty-five. They're looking to update their ordinance, which would then have bumped it up to seventy-five, still well less than the one-hundred-and-one were proposing. That would be included on the PUD plan and certainly far less than what the one-hundred-and-forty-two for Polk City's current code. Urbendale would have, would require sixty-five parking stalls for this facility and City of Weston Wayne would require ninety-three. So there's pretty good range, but even the high end is less than the one-hundred-and-one that showed in this PUD. And all of it's substantially less than what Polk City's code. Just to put that in a frame of reference. Again, each community calculates is a calculation that's a little different as you can see, but just about the composite total is the best comparison.
Can you talk a little bit about how the Leonard Park nineteen spaces work with this or what's going on here? Is this a runoff and it isn't really?
That's, that's really a kind of a part of the park dedication is what what we're looking at. And that's not defined yet, but it's been discussed as an option of a way to use the the park dedication funds that this.
Has nothing to do with the park for this facility?
No, I mean, it would provide some overflow because it is, you know, close by. It would have that option of providing some potentially.
How to get to it.
But it also obviously enhances the park.
You're gonna put a bridge in?
No, there's, the trail connects. The trail, the fire apparatus road, there is a trail actually connects to.
Quite a lot.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it would probably be staff or something, yeah. Yeah, I mean, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that it's.
We would shuttle.
Yeah.
We would shuttle from that location if we.
Yeah, I mean, and it'd have to work out an agreement with the city. It's just that that gives another option. It also helps, the thing that it does do is it provides some relief from parking that occurs in the residential neighborhood. It's now for the park. Because right now what you're seeing is people parking on, I'll say Maple Circle, Maple Street, Maple Drive, sorry. I always think of it as Maple Circle. No, it's not. But on Maple to use, and they use the, use a trail from the end of the cul-de-sac to get to the park. So this would help alleviate some of the the neighborhood congestion by providing a place on the park. So it's not necessarily directly, unless there's an agreement worked out in terms of shuttling, a direct. So those are not counted in this parking code. Not included in these numbers at all. That's kind of over and above and and one way to potentially use park dedication fees in a way that would enhance the park, pull traffic off and parking off of those side streets and and pull them into the park.
So it has nothing to, it's a separate consideration between developer and the city council.
Yeah, yeah, it's just, like I said, it's a, it's a suggestion, but it's, like I said, it seems like a reasonable thing that could be a win-win both for the city, for the neighbors because it does get parking on the street, provide a place. Also, I guess just in the city in general in terms of having better access to that park.
Any questions for Kathleen? Chelsea, is there anything you'd like to add? I'm kind of thinking as, you know, we know how this affects the people that live. But what are the pros and cons for the Polk City? The rest of the people that don't live around it don't have that concern that these people. I'm gonna put you on the spot.
No, I, there are pros and cons, but from the city's perspective, I think we're excited about the project. This has obviously not gone to the council yet, so I can't speak on their behalf. It will go to the council, it's a recommendation. Obviously, we talked about development and, you know, increased taxable valuations, jobs created. I think that's something that does get us fairly excited. They've explained, you know, this creates seventy to eight jobs in our city. It's tremendous for a community the size of, you know, Polk City. So I will, I will leave it at that. You know, I think that it is important for us to talk about the Leonard Park parking lot. It, I think that there's a lot of moving pieces to that proposal. But, you know, we thought it was important to show you that we were trying to work with being somewhat creative on meeting the parking requirements and having a dual purpose. You know, we talk a lot about a sea of concrete with parking lots and it is nice to have a dual purpose for our parking lot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, as I see this, and Chelsea correct me if I'm wrong, but we have two things that we need to make recommendations on in one way or another. I gotta find them. I got it in there. On page five, six. First one would be a recommendation on comprehensive plan amendment. And there's three options, A, B, and C there. That has to be done before we can move on to the next one, which is the bottom of the page, the recommendation.
You are going to make one motion though, correct?
No, I'm asking if we're making two motions. We have to make one before the other and I see, I see.
Kathleen says you can, you need to do two.
Yeah, I think how long late we do.
She said that's the typical.
Do one for the comprehensive plan and then fine in the second motion, the zoning change and it being tied to, and in the case of a PUD tying it to that. So that you don't have the slim risk of approving the zoning change but not approving the zoning or the master plan.
Yeah, and just to clarify, and typically in the, in the ordinance approving the zoning, it actually mentions the master plan in it. So if it does, they are linked then and normally what will happen is the ordinance gets recorded and the actual master plan gets recorded as well. So they actually become documents, so it ties them per amount.
Can I say something?
Certainly.
Yes, this is my neighborhood. I just live up the street. The nursing home has been in my life most of the time. I've had, the whole time that it's been there, I've had family members work there. I've had family members go there. And I have friends that have gone there too, that live there, have lived there for a short time. So I've been in the nursing home a lot, so I know what that has given to our community. It is my neighborhood. I, just yesterday, I was with my grandsons and I was riding our bikes. And one thing that people I don't think remember is that there is an underground path to the other side of the street. So anyone that lives in independent living, and at my age, you know, I do have friends that move into independent living now too. And they're all in good shape, they all want to walk, they want to go places. So I think this underground path to the other side of the street is very beneficial because everyone would walk under, there's no danger because that street can get pretty busy going across. And they can go up to Quick Star, they can go to the library, they can go to, from that side of town, there's a brand-new park, there's, and ball fields. And my kids with the bike path there, I have lived on that bike path over the years. You know, from cross-country skiing to bicycling. My kids would, that's when, in the days when you could, your kids at night could go out to the ball fields by going down through that park. Of course, today you wouldn't do, let your kids do that. But so it's, it's been in my life the whole time. I think it's, you know, there are issues with it being tight, but I think it's a really good place to have it. And I think there's been a lot of consideration on making it workable. And there's no doubt about it, it's very good for the community.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Just a couple of comments. I always get concerned when we have verbal promises as far as how something's going to be administered and how best document those promises. I, a lot of us, I guess, have had experiences in our own neighborhoods where the people that made the promises, like the two gentlemen here, I totally believe as long as they're in their positions, everything that they say, true. I have no reason to doubt that. But this facility is going to be there a long time. You know, after the third person gets into their position, how, how does that, you know, come into the effect or, you know, what teeth does the city have if we get into parking issues and they're no longer doing what they have verbally stated tonight? And, you know, how can we document that better in the master plan or something along those lines? And then additionally, at our prior meeting, three weeks ago or whenever that was, there was a concern mentioned by a citizen that, you know, this is a very specific building, but in the rare case that it might not make it in this location. You know, what's the, you know, their concern was, is it gonna be apartments or what could it be? And I was just wondering if we could somehow limit the use in the PUD to be a senior living facility and associated services that still gives them the latitude to have a kitchen, to have a physical therapy room and, you know, those kinds of things.
You know, those are listed?
Yeah.
Make sure that it's in there, that's just, and only those?
And so those are just some ideas, you know, I, I just, those are concerns. I just don't know how to get around it. We have a, you know, we have another PUD in our community that's turned out very favorable for the community, but it has no parks. And being the TCI PUD and the initial project setup of that and the initial manager was real clear that, you know, people that live in those residences will be able to access that property when not in use, you know, essentially use it as a park. And that lasted for a few years. And then we went into signing a legal release to do that, which was, I thought was fine. I happened to work for a pretty risk-averse company, so I understood what they were up to. But now it's kind of progressed to if you step on their property, you know, the the police get called, you know. And so, and so now we have a large PUD with no park, even though we had verbal assurances upfront. And so that's kind of the concern here with some of the parking things that you're proposing. I have no doubt you're gonna be implementing those. I just am concerned about how that will be managed at the time. I don't think anybody can answer your question.
Oh, no. I don't think anybody can give you any assurance.
Yeah, and 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 that's, the only way it can be assured is if it's in writing. You know, that's the only way that we can have it be assured.
Let mine for thirty seconds. On the, on the portion about this becoming something else, this is a thirty-five to forty-million-dollar project. It's not an insignificant deal and I would not be, you know, working towards that. Ross and I are two guys at the company, but understand that may change or from a sales standpoint, that may change down the road. But we don't intend to sell this project, so we intend to work on it. But in the event that this did happen to fail because of something we did operationally or what happened from, like, this, this project would have a history of selling at forty, fifty, or sixty cents on the dollar to another location for somebody that's gonna be taking a bath at the bank and then another group of senior, senior living group would come in and take over and run it. So if, if that's a stipulation that we would put in there, that if, if this was to sell, it would have to sell as a senior living location, we would have any issue. We're very confident this will be successful here.
It's not uncommon for us to have restrictive covenants. That's typically how we would deal with that with the city. So if, you know, if within those guidelines, you know, shuttle services, you know, that, that the operators of that facility have to maintain that on an ongoing basis, it's not a problem. Thank you. To Brian's point, use, you know, that it has to maintain a senior living classification throughout its life. Then I, I don't think we'd have any problem with this.
So legally, we can place covenants on it?
I mean, sure, the developer could, I mean, prior to the site. Right, we don't typically, we don't manage or oversee restrictive covenants. So we'd have to be the developer, I mean, unless it was taking responsibility for them.
So they, there's no way to enforce it, even though it's a covenant.
There's no way for the city to enforce restrictive.
Yeah, if they don't want to do it, we've got covenants at TCI and they don't.
It depends.
Yeah, so, so there's, there's no way to assure. You know, we've sat here before and had good developers tell us well-meaning what they want to do. But we sit up here and we'd like them to comply with what they originally said and we say no, but it doesn't matter. But we understand that there's a lot more things involved than what we look at also. That's kind of why I asked your question about, you know, the economic part of it. And, you know, sometimes you just have to take a chance and move forward and you can't just stop, you know. Yeah, it's a, it's a tough thing. I appreciate you coming back to us and working with the parking. Appreciate your comments also about the project. We take emphasis here. And I'm still concerned about the density that's there. I also realize that there's a certain amount of economic. I also re- re-imply is that there's a certain amount of economics involved in all of this. And, um, if you don't, you have all those employees and you have all those universal facilities and more people you can have, density, more you can serve. So there's a lot of, you know, things on both sides that we kind of have to look at. We also have to look at, um, I'm very concerned about the, the neighbors and living next to it. I know if it was me, I wouldn't want it there. But there's also whole good of, uh, of Polk City and all the citizens and what we serve and what we do. So we have to take that into consideration and, um, I think at this time, is there any more conversation or comments that someone like Doug?
I'll just, I'll just comment on a couple of things or a few things of my thoughts on it. I, you know, obviously, and I appreciate the input that we've had both times, uh, and you're coming back again. I very much appreciate you looking at it again. And, you know, personally, I'm reluctant, you know, to very seldom change a comprehensive plan uh, that we've developed over time. However, in my opinion, this time, this is a unique opportunity and I, I'm in favor of changing the comprehensive plan for that reason. I think the parking requirements of surrounding community study was very helpful to me in my thinking on that. I think we typically have had this discussion even other developments here in town that the parking was an issue. Looked at that, I think daycare center for one. Um, I think the parking for, uh, Leonard Park is going to be a community enhancement, even though it's also, you know, it's a side benefit here. But I, I've often wondered, how do you get to that park, you know, without walking or biking? And so it'll take some of the load off the side streets. I think the setbacks being increased and the look of what I've seen architecturally here of the building, the memory care facing residential, they've done a very good job of trying to make it look residential. And that three-story building is so far back and it's along Parker, which basically it's a long ways from residential on either side of Parker or going back the other way. I mean, it's still visible obviously, but across Parker, uh, there's kind of a big ravine and on one side of it and the housing is set back quite a ways. So those are the things that have kind of affected my thinking over time. And I, I think it's a great asset to our community and I, I would be in favor of these changes.
Okay, thank you. And I'd like to make a motion so we can go on, go home, eat, get out of this hot hell in here.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's cold in here.
Hot, hot, hot. Man. I, I've got a ninety-two-year-old mother who wants to walk into her parking lot.
Sorry.
And, and you feel like in hell. It's so hot and it's hot in here. I'm overdressed, so.
Okay, uh, I'll make a motion that we recommend the council approval of the applicant's request for Leonard Senior Living to amend the future land use plan of the subject property area to high-density residential.
Second.
Could we, um, uh, add to that that we would like the developer to, uh, put in writing a covenant to present to the city council that, of what they've said they would do?
Can you put that in the second part?
Yeah, I was thinking it should go with the next part of the opening.
Okay, all right, okay. I'll withdraw the question now. Okay, I, I'm, we have a motion, we have a second. Jenny, would you please do real quick?
Olfest?
Yes.
Pregnant?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Pinkin?
Yes.
Baurst?
Yes.
Triplet?
Yes.
Sires?
Yes.
Uh, I will also make a motion that we recommend the council approval of, yeah, request to rezone their property for Leonard Senior Living to a planned unit development PUD as presented, uh, subject to, uh, city staff and engineers' comments, uh, which are described in the memo dated, uh, November seventh, two thousand two, uh, two thousand twenty-two. Uh, additionally, uh, making the, uh, uh, property use restricted to a senior living facility and associated services. And also additionally, that the developer worked with city staff prior to, uh, going to city council to, uh, to get documented in writing covenants to cover, uh, parking concerns.
Second.
Okay, we have the motion and the second on recommendation on rezoning. Could you roll call again, please, Jenny?
Triplet?
Yes.
Sires?
Yes.
Olfest?
Yes.
Pregnant?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Pinkin?
Yes.
Baurst?
Yes.
Okay, before everybody leaves, we'd like to finish up because we had a little delay last night. And this is pretty easy. Need a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thanks.
I'm sorry.
Did, remember this is a.